Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out to our meetings this evening. We actually have two meetings on the docket for this evening. Our first will be a special board voting meeting. It will be rather short. And then after that, we'll take a very brief break and then move right into our board workshop meeting. So we'll start off with our board special voting meeting. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last week, we received some heartbreaking news of a tragic accident that claimed the lives of Exeter senior Garrett Dawson, his father Brian Dawson, and his sister, recent Exeter graduate Kylie Dawson. The family was driving to vacation when their car was hit head-on by a driver who crossed into their lane. The mother, Mrs. Melissa Dawson, survived the injuries. It was a tragedy for all that knew them, and I think for the general Exeter community. We all share in their grief and pain. Please join in a moment of silence in remembrance of the Dawson family. So I want to thank our district counselors and other administrative and support personnel who provided counseling to those students and staff who were affected by this unimaginable loss. I know, Dr. Phillips, that we had many staff and administrators who were involved. Can you kind of give us an update?
Sure. You know, echoing the tragedy, I was in a meeting and Dr. Miller poked her head in. And that's usually not a good thing. And unfortunately, you know, when she said it, you know, my heart sunk. I think her heart was already sunk when she walked in the room. These are not ever easy things to deal with. You know, as an Exeter family, as Dr. Hamberger spoke, it affected us all, obviously the family more so. Immediately, Dr. Miller and the counseling staff, as well as the crisis team, went into action. We had three days set up for students to come into the building. Took a while for the students to really start to come in, but then they started coming in more and more. Thursday, Friday, the traffic was much, much, much more numbers-wise. We had a remembrance wall where I think that brought some students together. They just wanted to be together. And as they were together, the counselors started to speak to them, and some of them opened up, and it really became a good time for them to be together. I know that's still ongoing. There's some events. I know there is an event in Reedus on Thursday. Mr. Campbell, did we get the times on those yet?
Not now.
Okay, we'll share that on the website. There's a fundraiser at Reedus on Thursday night. I know there's been some other events. Again, it's such a tragedy for anyone to lose their life, but in this situation, that young, it doesn't really have a lot of words to say. But, you know, again, the staff and the administration came together to try and support our students, and we'll continue to support the family.
Again, thanks to those folks who were involved, and thanks for keeping us all aware of what's happening, this tragic situation. So we'll move on to the board meeting with public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone from the community who may like to speak to the board on any topics that are relevant to the school district. I would just ask you to identify your name and your address. Seeing none, we'll move on to item three personnel. Mr. Tepin.
Thank you, Dr. Hamberger. First, we're going to deal with resignations. It's recommended the board of school directors approve and ratifies the following resignations: Administrative staff Jeffrey Fries, principal of Walton Creek Elementary; and certificated staff Stacy Ariza, second grade teacher at Walton Creek Elementary.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approve and ratifies the following appointments: Certified staff items one through seven, School Health Services items one and two.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Change of status is recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following requests for change of status. Administrative staff Edward J. Esselman, appointed as principal of Lorain Elementary effective August 14th, 2019. Margaret D. Wright, appointed as assistant principal of the Senior High School effective August 14th, 2019.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approves and ratifies the following request for change of status. Support staff Lisa De Laanzy.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Job description approvals is recommended the board of school directors approves the job description for the following positions: Student Services Liaison, General Maintenance Technician.
Do we have a second one? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Any discussion? Yes.
I have a question. Can I apologize? I wasn't here in July when I think that this was discussed. So I guess I'm curious to know a little bit about this description and what is different here in this new role as opposed to what we were doing previously?
What position? With the liaison.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
This is a new position.
Yes, but what is different in this compared to things that we might have done in the past? Because as I look at some of these things, a lot of them, I would hope, are things that we were doing before. So are they, no, we weren't?
We've been really working without these types of services, and this was an opportunity through the grant that we could bring someone onboard and take advantage of these opportunities to provide those services. I mean, piecemeal things have been getting done, but there's really not been anyone that is focused on doing what this position can be able to do.
And my understanding is this position is in place for two years with the grant?
It's a two-year grant. Now, we haven't heard from the governor that this grant will roll over in two years, but this position is only for two years. The person who's taking the position is aware of that. Once we, we've been very transparent with that throughout the applicant process. So whenever we get to a candidate that we bring to the board, they will have been well-versed in the fact that it is right now for two years.
Do we have a timeline for interviews?
I don't know where we're at right now. I know we've had some applicants.
Yes, we were waiting to get this approved, and then we're going to move forward, but we have a lot of applicants in the pipeline.
Okay, great.
Is it the district's or the administration's desire for the grant to be refunded during the next budget process or later so that we can keep this position on longer?
Well, this is a two-year grant, so it wouldn't come up again for another year after next. But yes, I mean, we're all, as you've kind of heard from Mrs. Stratton, we're all excited about being able to provide these services, and we feel that once we see the services being provided and the worth it's going to be for the district, that we will certainly reapply for the grant.
Okay. I really liked the direction the district went with the grant application. You know, I think many districts have chosen to go the route of mental health and social services, and I think this is really one of the best ways to protect, you know, the district in terms of school safety is by having greater level of assurance that our kids are identified who are having problems and are getting the treatment they need.
One of the discussions, we had a lot of the districts went with building, facility, safety, vestibules, different things like that. Dr. Miller and I talked, number one, about the need for this position, but also, you know, we've talked about this at countless board meetings about mental health issues and needs in the district. This fit that in the worst way, as well as the fact that this was the second highest award in the county. So it was recognized that what we put together, Dr. Miller put together, was worth every penny of it. I mean, good support from, again, you know, Senator Schwenk and the rest of the different representatives, they stepped up and really fought for it. So there is certainly an awareness that this is needed.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Can we, before, I just want to say a couple of words about Mr. Fries before he goes, before we move on to Mrs. Stratton's position. He was here only for a brief time, but in the brief time, he certainly made a mark on the district. He had said many times that if the position that he was being recruited for was not three and a half miles from his house, he would still be here. So I want to reassure everyone that he did not leave for any other reason, but just thanking him for the mark he left on this district, I really think, in his short time, he did some really good things. So I just wanted to say that before we move on.
I wanted to say that too. But as a parent of a student out of Walton Creek, he was wonderful, and he did a great job coming into that school in the middle of the year and taking over. And I was taking a breath, and he said, "Look, look." So, sorry.
Well, again, but he just had such an impact on the students. I mean, you know, he kind of, in one day, took over the building. I mean, the kids, it was amazing. We had a lot of fun with it because I'm used to going in the classrooms and having the kids all excited to see me. And we walked after his first day, we walked in the classrooms, and I was a ghost. "Mr. Fries, Mr. Fries." And, you know, we made a joke out of it, like, "Who is it?" So he made a big impact on the students as well. So, you know, it was nice to see it, and I'll be missed.
Okay, we're going to move on to student functions. Mrs. Stratton.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the attached Senior High School, Junior High School, Reifton, and Elementary Handbook for Electronic Distribution. The summary of 2019, 2020 handbook provisions are attached, and then the summaries only contain substantive revisions and do not include minor changes made to improve readability or expectancy.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion carries. I think that's it. I think I will accept the motion for adjournment. We have a second, and we're adjourned for this meeting. We're going to move into the board workshop meeting unless anyone wants to take a short break. If not, we can move right in. You okay? Okay. All right, this is our workshop meeting where we review the items that will be on the agenda for the next voting meeting, which will be next Tuesday. Get on and welcome everybody to this meeting. This is a little bit more participative. You know, this is an opportunity for our administrators to check in with us and other members of committees and the public to kind of respond to certain items on the agenda that they might have questions about. So before we get into the rest of the agenda, we're going to start off with a billing program report from Mr. Frank Flam, our junior high school principal.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's been a very busy summer, and I think finally, just this week, we're fully staffed for the upcoming year. So we're ready for orientation tomorrow, both morning and evening, and for the ball to get rolling on another school year. We're looking forward to a number of things this coming year, including some things that we initiated previously and will continue, such as work with content area literacy, work that Julie Klein began and that we look forward to continuing in terms of promoting reading apprenticeship strategies, student engagement strategies, Collins Writing, including Type 1, 2, and 3 writings. Our teachers have embraced this, and we feel that this is a great opportunity for our students. We're writing more, we're reading more, and I think our students are benefiting. We will include benchmark testing, which we began last year with the Star Reading and Math Assessments, and we will continue with iXL as a supplement to our college prep math program. We have new materials for our Social Studies and Science classes. In fact, our Social Studies teachers are in the building today, working with those materials, and I know they're excited, enthused, and looking forward to implementing the new programs. So thank you. We also want to say thank you to the foundation and to our Maydays for providing some funding for some initiatives that we have. Two of our science teachers sought funding for breakout EDU kits, gaming kits for the science classrooms, and they're excited, very excited that they've received the grants and are looking forward to implementing the breakout EDU kits. A GoPro camera for our computer applications teachers. And our Bridges and Autistic Support students will be operating a coffee card this school year, and they were awarded close to $500 for that. So we're looking forward to that opportunity, as well as to our librarian and Susan Umarino applied for a $500 grant for Learning Ally for audiobooks for our Bridges students. So that's a great opportunity for that population. We're looking forward to a greater social media presence and increased communication. That's one of our goals. And also, the Olvea's Anti-Bullying Program, which has gathered such great support and has been so beneficial to our students, is changing in name from Olvea's to Apex. And that change is brought on by the fact that we've had some people come into the district to work with John Ardi to put together a documentary, actually, about the Olvea's program and the success that we've had in building empathy for our students. But in taking that program and wanting to move that out throughout the county, in fact, there's a session coming up in September at the IU to share what we've done with other school districts throughout the county, the name is changing to Apex. We moved away from a lot of the Olvea's lessons and really made Olvea's our own at the junior high over the years, thanks in large part to John Ardi. And so we felt that a name change was in order. The committee met to discuss it, and they decided on Apex Anti-Bullying at Exeter as the new name. And I think at this time, it would be a good opportunity to, just to say that, you know, we recognize that we have big shoes to fill with John Ardi's retirement. But Joe Alcaro hit the ground running. In fact, Joe came onboard and participated in an Apex Core Committee Flex Opportunity Full Day prior to his even starting with us officially, and has really jumped on the social media piece and has been a great addition, and I'm really looking forward to working with Joe. He's been a big help already. The next area I want to talk about is student supports. And certainly, in recent years, in large part, thanks to Dr. Miller and to our counselors and to our support staff, we have been able to provide additional supports for our students. We'll continue to use Apex. We will continue our Student Assistance Program, which is thriving and excellent. We'll continue our progression services for students. But in addition to these areas, we'll bring in a Laurel Life classroom this year, and that will provide opportunities for instruction and therapy for a number of our students. In addition, we will be receiving initial trauma-informed instruction training on September 20th, and then I'll be working with Dr. Miller to establish our first trauma-informed instruction cohort, which will meet throughout the year and will be able to provide information and training for our staff in addition to that cohort. So we're looking forward to that. Another area where we're following up on is Sierra Callman, one of our counselors, and Rachel Magga, one of our speech therapists, along with Counselor Kim Shaw, began a Connections Club last year, I guess two years. And it's been very impactful on our students. Students who, you know, for whatever reason, may be new to our building, wanting to establish friendships, or struggling in that area, they've identified a number of these students and brought them together for opportunities to build friendships and relationships. And so we'll continue that. But in addition, they came to me last year with an idea of having some student mentors for students who are new to our building. And so they reached out to our faculty and asked for recommendations, names, of students who might serve as student mentors for students who are new to our building. And so at the beginning of this school year, we'll be working with our counselors and a number of those students who will be volunteering to serve as mentors to build friendships and opportunities for students who are new to our building. We see that as a need. So I'm excited about that opportunity, and our counselors have been tremendous, along with Rachel Magga. We'll start our second technology cohort with Dan Wilczek and Missy Dow. They did great work with our first technology cohort, and so we're looking forward to last year's cohort and this year's cohort providing opportunities for professional development for our teachers throughout the year with regard to technology and implementation in the classroom. For example, one of our teachers who was involved in that cohort last year had students building podcasts, creating podcasts, and it was terrific. You know, kids were coming to me at lunchtime saying, "Did you hear our podcast? Did you listen to our podcast?" And so, you know, it was a great way to get kids enthused about ELA class. Just one example of some of the good work that we've done with that technology cohort. Dan and Missy are tremendous. They are really great in working with our teachers and promoting the implementation of technology in a great, positive way. In regard to our physical plant, we are limping toward the finish line with our chiller. It is a daily check-in, and frequently, I'm talking with Al about what needs to be done to get that thing up and running for another day. And so hopefully, we'll be able to make it to October, when the new chiller is scheduled to be installed. And in addition, we have six security cameras that are either, either the cameras are going to be installed new, or the lenses are going to be changed out to wide-angle lenses so that we can capture more of our building. That's been a great advantage to have those cameras in the building. So looking forward to the addition. So in the grade orientation, already tomorrow morning and tomorrow evening, looking forward to that. Our back-to-school night is Wednesday, September 4th, and of course, our annual awards ceremony is in early September as well. We're looking forward to another exciting year.
Our hell, you're somewhere that...
Busy. Very busy.
So with the one-to-one, having been in the building for a couple of years now, how do you think it's going with the students? Where do you think some of the feedback you've got from some of the teachers on it, and how do you think we're going to move forward this year with it?
Well, our teachers embrace Schoology right away. And if you ask Dan and Wilczek and Missy Dow, they would tell you that our teachers are loops and bounds ahead of others because they did that, and they provided great training. And what I liked about the training that they provided initially was it was tiered. So we knew, we had some teachers who were running out in front of the rest, who didn't need the basics. We also knew we had some teachers who were okay with it, and we had some novice teachers, and they provided training specific to those groups. So I think for that reason, it grew organically, and teachers were not afraid to move forward with Schoology. So from the standpoint of using the one-to-one with Schoology, I think it's been tremendous for our students. You know, we're still wrestling with students making sure that, making sure that students are using the technology appropriately during the school day. So that's an area that we're focusing on. But our teachers have been proactive, and all in all, I think, one-to-one has been terrific for our school.
Now, we've had Algebra 1 down to seventh grade for a few years. Are you finding that students are more prepared coming into it, they're more accepting of it? How are you looking? How many classrooms do you have, you're expecting this?
Yeah. Our Algebra 1, our seventh-grade Algebra 1 kids have always performed exceptionally well. You know, these are our best and brightest, so we would expect them to. And what I was excited about last year was the creation of that Algebra 1 course that's a step down from the Honors Algebra 1, and the students we were able to get in there from our CC2 program. So students coming into seventh grade taking CC2 traditionally would have moved on to CC3 without the opportunity to bump up to honors-level algebra. This gave our kids an opportunity to jump into an algebra course in eighth grade that was not quite as fast-paced, not quite as rigorous, but it was still a Keystone algebra course, so we gave more kids the opportunity to take algebra. I think we're doing great things in math with our kids in terms of getting them into an algebra program earlier and seeing success with that. Our numbers again this year, upper 90s in terms of students who are proficient or advanced in Keystone for Algebra 1. So we want to keep providing that opportunity and making sure that we're getting as many kids as possible in there who can be successful.
Now, for the students who are completing Algebra 1, are they moving now to geometry or are they in grade 2 for that?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Just prior to John Ardi's retirement, I stopped in to say goodbye to him. I probably spent about a half hour with him, and he was telling me all about the Apex program and the changes. And then he finished up by kind of giving me a little glimpse of the video that they put together, sort of profiled the way that program worked. And I wonder if that's going to be shared at all publicly, or whether the other board members would have a chance to see that at some point, or is that still in production?
It has been finished, and we'd be glad to show that. In fact, that will be part of the presentation at the IU coming up in September. So we're looking forward to sharing that out and to helping other schools develop a program similar to ours, specifically in terms of building empathy for students with disabilities. And that really has had an impact on our school, providing lessons for students, because often our students just, they want to be, they are compassionate, they want to interact with students, but maybe aren't quite sure how. And this has provided an opportunity to learn about the students and to learn how to best interact, and so it's been wonderful.
You know, I don't know how far the program goes over and beyond that, but that really seemed to be a major emphasis of the program, was just developing empathy and giving kids real experiences, simulated disabilities that really sunk home the whole idea of what it may be like to face an impairment of some kind. So, well done. Thank you. Thank Mr. Flamm. Okay, we added an item to the agenda that is not, will not be on the board for voting next week, but it was a discussion item that came out of a conversation that I had with Mrs. Page a couple of weeks ago. She said, "We need to do something about plastics." And she probably burnt my ear for half an hour, you know, on the phone, just talking about her real concerns. And I absolutely share those concerns about, you know, overconsumption of plastic and ways that we may be able to, as an organization, find ways to not only recycle, that's just part of it, but actually try to reduce or eliminate our use of, of single-use plastic, which has become a real burden on both society and our ecology. I mean, when you consider what's been happening in our oceans and streams and the quantity of plastics that find their way there, and the life of plastic as being, who knows how many, hundreds or thousands of years before it actually decomposes, it's a concern that we all have and that we all should play a part in the solution. So I'll let, Mrs. Page, why don't you kind of give us your interpretation as you mentioned?
I subscribe to National Geographic, and in the latest one that I had gotten, it said that we have nine billion tons a year of plastic that goes into the oceans, and many, like, big fish, you know, or, you know, sharks or whatever, they get caught up in it, and of course, they die because they can't get out of it. So we were wondering what we can do as a school district to help in educating our students about, you know, using plastic and then throwing it away into the trash, and then, you know, it gets into the landfills. And I think it's 100 years... And I, I think it's a hundred years before plastic disintegrates. I think that's what I had, I had read. So I don't know if anyone has any suggestions than what we should do. I mean, should we ban plastic like we did ban, what was that? What was that pesticide that we banned?
DDT.
Roundup?
Roundup, yes.
Roundup.
So should we ban plastics from here and make sure that, you know, we, we don't want Styrofoam because that's bad too, that goes into the trash. But, you know, paper, that disintegrates, you know, in a short period of time. And I don't know if we should talk to the food services? Because I know, and I remember Dr. Hamburger, when we were, had some kind of...
Retirement dinner.
Retirement dinner. I remember he was, he was picking out the plastic and taking it home because otherwise it would go into the landfill. And as I said, it's a hundred years before that disintegrates. So if anyone has, feels the same way as I do, I would hope maybe you might want to speak up on the issue because, you know, it's our children and grandchildren that are going to be, you know, having the brunt of all this plastic around.
Well, Pat, I think that we could possibly do some head-on reduction as a group. I think there's some areas that we do find challenges when we're looking at providers, for example, water bottles or soda bottles. I think then you have to talk to the manufacturers. There has to be a public outcry to use biodegradable plastics, which they can develop, but they're more expensive. I think as a group, though, we could possibly adopt things that are much more friendly to the environment. I don't know if we're using plastics for all, but we should be using paper. I know I've gone to a number of restaurants where they put a little sign up, "We're saving the fish, you should too. Use a straw today, it's made out of paper." I was at a wedding this past weekend where all the silverware was being, other than the silverware being washed, was made out of like a hard cardboard, almost like a wood type of material. I think, well, it's a one-use deal. I mean, how many times you get a plastic spoon or fork and you throw it away? I'm the guy that comes home and my wife tells me, I go, I go to work with one spoon, I come home with three. You know, they kind of keep growing into our washing machine and she doesn't know what to do with them and then she hands them off to people for gifts at Christmas. So if you get them, you'll know where they came from. I think that, I think if we as a body make a personal investment, you know, as a group to show a positive environmental footprint, I think that's the best we can do with the constraints we have. I don't, I don't believe, like San Francisco does a single-use plastic ban. I don't think we're supposed to be great brother, but I think we should be conscientious in being good stewards of our environment in any place we can.
I feel much the same as Jim does. I also think that this would be a really unique situation where we could empower especially the high school students. Because I think, speaking as a millennial and for the, I don't even know what the next generation is called now. That's bad.
No, they're, I think like the wilders.
Yeah, Gen whatever it is.
Wash Gen.
Yeah. You know, I think at a gut level, we get this issue and I think it may be empowering, especially at the high school level, the students to really take ownership of this issue, I think would be effective. And I think if I remember correctly, Mr. Perzui, one of the issues that we have in terms of recycling is we have single-stream recycling, so whenever it's contaminated with trash, the whole bag then has to be put in the trash per, per, I don't know who our provider is, but per, per the company that collects our recycling and trash, is that right?
That's any company would have that policy.
Okay, okay.
If you clean recycling, that's fine. You have clean quote-unquote garbage, that's fine. If they're intermixed, it's garbage.
Are there ways that we could, I wonder, because in the high school cafeteria, some of the recycling cans have the holes at the top where you can only put, well, they're specially made so that you're supposed to be able to only put bottles in them. And then you have the trash cans that are adjacent to them. Does that seem to have any effect? Because I, I would wager that the amount of intermingling is probably less in a cafeteria day than it is maybe at the stadium when you have people throwing away their trash and throwing away their recycling.
Yeah, I would say it's a safe assumption. I don't have, you know, hard data on that. I'm not pumping through the garbage.
Yeah, I'm not recommending that, I'm just speaking from a gut level. Yeah, I'm loving that law.
Sure, tomorrow. The, you know, the can, the lid with the small opening is almost like a reminder. It's not, I mean, you can throw a hamburger in there, it'll fit, but it's a visual cue to say, oh, that's only for recycling. The non-recycling garbage can.
Would it be a burden, let's say, if some of the high school wood shop classes or junior high? I don't know if junior high wood, has wood shop anymore.
We have a combination, it's got its own technology.
Okay. Would it be a burden if some of the projects in there were to create lids that could go on all the recycling cans within the district? Might be a good class project.
Does the high school have ecology class or they teach?
Mr. Kim?
There is an environmental club at the high school. Some of those issues of ecology are touched on in science classes, but there's not an ecology class per se.
Is that Mr. Voski's group? I know he's doing some work on the erosion.
Well, that's actually, that's not his club, that's Leo Club, but they are addressing some environmental issues through Leo Club. Now, Mr. Rappert runs the ecology.
Mr. Rappert, okay. I think what we can do too is, as you mentioned, the students, and we have student forums and they usually have topics to discuss. And we could add, this is a topic, our students are pretty receptive and responsive to different issues. This might be something to sort of start the dialogue on.
Yeah, I mean, certainly this, you know, educating kids about the importance of being good stewards to the environment is part of our role as educators. So I, you know, I think it, I think it's critical that we lead the way in some respects to make sure that kids are going back to their families and talking about, it's not, it's not just what we do here. It's, it's how we can influence families in our community to be more mindful about their consumption patterns too. You know, the other thing that we, I was giving some thought about about, you know, water fountains, things like that. A lot of people think, oh, you don't drink out of a water fountain, you have to drink your water out of a bottle, you know? Bottled water. And if our water fountains, or at least some of our water fountains were equipped with reverse osmosis filtration systems, which I know would be an expense, but if they were, some that were there where the kids could fill up their own water bottles at a filling station in the, in the school, there might be some savings, you know, in that area by kids kind of bringing their own bottles, you know, into school.
That's about $500 to $1,000 per unit.
I think, and I think ECEF has that on their... Yeah, I was, I, I would be happy to donate to that, but...
How many units?
Well, I'm donating to one. One of, one of the other things I was wondering, is there any way that we can look at? I don't know if the vending machines on campus provide any type of revenue, but is it a possibility that if they are an expense, we replace that expense with purchasing water bottles that can be bought in the office or something for a dollar?
Mr. O'Gaff? Mr. O'Gaff?
Yeah.
Do we, do we receive much revenue from our, our vending machines?
We make money.
We make money, yeah. I mean, that might be something that we can discuss with the, with the vendors.
Which year were you born?
1996, right on the cusp.
You're Zen, you're Gen Z, you're not a millennial, you're the next gen.
Well...
Which is good, you're not Jimmy Alpha.
It depends on which one you look at. It depends on which one you look at. I've seen like three different ones and two out of the three.
You're too young to be a millennial.
Too young to be a millennial.
Well, I kind of consider this as a start, maybe just a little nudge in the right direction, you know, for this board to start to think about it a little bit, for our administration to think about it a little bit and come up with any thoughts or ideas. I think we all work together on it. We may be able to make some progress, Jim?
We're having a facilities meeting next Monday. Why don't we put that on the agenda as one of our subtopics? We can dedicate 15, 20 minutes to just brainstorming where and how we might be able to institute a more proactive policy.
It's a great idea. Thank you. Okay. So, Mrs. Page, anything else you want to say before we move on?
I, I think, you know, the, it going lower and lowering, you know, from like kindergarten to first graders to start them on the, on the road too, to, to think, you know, not plastic, but, you know, paper or something like that as compared to. I think you gotta start early and then that gets ingrained in the children and then they do the right thing as they're going off the line, you know? Rather than starting at the 12th grade level, you know? So I think maybe the, the teachers, you know, can put a few good words in there when they're, they're doing whatever they're doing.
I'd say too, I mean, we always think about recycling, which is great, but there are two things prior to that, which is reduce and reuse. And, you know, I, I think if we can start to educate kids, you know, all the components, you know, and how they can, how they can be part of the solution, we can make a difference.
And we had Mascaro came into our elementary schools and presented a summary on this very topic. Am I correct, Mrs. Hall? Dr. Hall, sorry. Don't take that away from it. Dr. Hall?
Yep, just my seat.
And we also did it at Lawton Creek, I believe.
Yes, I think, I think actually all the schools and Wrighton.
And Wrighton as well.
So we'll be doing that again this year and just give a check for what there's, you know?
Thanks, thank you for the conversation. We're going to move into public comments. Now, this is another opportunity, if there's anything on this agenda that anyone would like to speak to, this would be the opportunity, please identify who you are and where you live. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the agenda that we'll be voting on next week. And the first thing will be our July Board Voting Minutes. Also next week, we'll be voting on board policy. The first several policies have already been discussed in workshops, have already been sent out for review by our administration, by our board. They have to do with mainly facilities. We're moving into the section of the, of the, of the manual that applies more to the facilities. The ones that are relevant for first reading, draw your attention to Policy 707 on page four. Just maybe just a few discussion points about each one of these, each one of these policies. So 707 is an important policy that we all should take a look at because it's the use of our school facilities and, and how we charge organizations based upon their intention for the use of the, of the facility. In this particular policy revision, I think they've removed some of the district guidelines and language that appear to be overly procedural. And I hope that we're taking that language, which is important. I mean, the procedures for, say, requesting the use of a facility is, is important to know. Those, those should be part of administrative regulations. So what was, what was taken out here really needs to be modified. I hope that our administration is kind of attending to that, that aspect to it. There's also, in this particular policy, PSBA has added some prohibitive activities and consequences for violation and added some limigons fee schedules. I think it's also, I don't know, Mrs. Guiddes, when you looked through this, did you see anything in this policy that represents a major change in what we're doing right now in terms of how we're categorizing organizations? I know some organizations can use facilities for free and then there's a kind of a scale based upon, you know, the, who's using it and what they're using it for. Certainly if they're making a profit.
Right, and we developed those classes, the district CAS, they've been in place for a number of years. So that is, you know, the information that would be in the AR as well as on the form that they fill out to apply to use a facility, it's all documented.
Right. So when you, when you look through this policy, do you see anything in this policy that represents a change in terms of how we're currently applying the policy to the organizations that are using it right now?
Mr. Gaff, usually how is that? He's saying no, he's looking through that, he's comfortable with what we have here.
Okay, I know building principals have a responsibility here too. I know we have organizations that use this building. You know, we have the wrestling, we have a wrestling group here, assuming that nothing's going to change relative to their, their status.
And the things that we did change in the policy that PSBA did amend is the athletic director schedules the facilities for athletic requests and also how it can be used. So we tailored the policy so that it mirrors what we were currently doing.
Any, any questions or comments about Policy 707?
I just wanted to follow up on the emails that I sent to Bob and Ann earlier about prohibited activities. I, I was, I thought about your response, Dr. Phillips, in regards to my recommendation that there should be something in the prohibited activities that specifically identifies obscene materials or something related to that. And I looked through our other policies and I see several references to obscene materials and how that's prohibited elsewhere. You know, we make specific prohibitions in here related to illegal drugs, alcoholic beverages, possession of weapons that is already prohibited under the Defense of Angry Crimes Code. I, I think that we should be explicit in putting that in because I don't think that there should be any type of administrative discretion when it comes to obscene materials. And I, I think that it should be in here. I think that there isn't a reason why it shouldn't be. If there is a problem with the language according to PSBA, I think we should handle that when we come to it. But I don't understand why there would be a problem with that. So that's the my only recommendation that I would have.
So, so you're not seeing that under prohibited activities?
It's not under private activities.
I don't see any reason why you couldn't submit some language that we could, this is still first, you know, reading. So if you wanted to forward some of that language. And I'd like to have our attorney obviously look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Yeah, my only other thought in regards to this, which I've said before, is that, you know, it's not necessarily about approving this policy, about, about the policy in general, that I'd like to see us, you know, using this as a source of revenue. I mentioned before that I went to the Holy Middle School for a dance recital and the very next weekend I knew of someone else that was going to the same school for another dance recital. And, you know, I feel like that's valuable income that if people in the community knew that they could use our school for things like that, that maybe we could generate some income for the school doing something that doesn't cost us very much. So maybe, you know, making sure, I know it's posted on the website, but making sure that different businesses in the area maybe know that this is a possibility to them, that they can utilize the school for a pretty good deal.
I know we do generate some income. I think Mr. O'Gaff probably knows, probably has, gets probably the bulk of that through the athletic, use of the athletic fields. I'm not so sure whether our buildings really generate comparable revenue, but I, I think it's a good idea. Because I know we've had that conversation before, is, you know, we need to be a little more creative about how we can bring in additional funds for the school district. And this is conceivably one of those areas. Thank you.
Could we add in the gymnasium as a location that people could use on this new table? I don't see it listed.
Surely, we, we, I would try that because of the mats.
Yeah, we're not...
Yeah, they can't use those.
That has pretty much exclusive use for the, the wrestling group.
The wrestling.
Yeah.
Do we have a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement?
We have, we have a agreement.
Okay.
They also fill out a facilities report as well. So both that and the MOU is the, is what kind of controls the matter.
I don't recall, were you here when we did all that?
I don't think I was here when, no, I was here on May 1st.
During an establishment.
Yeah, it's like January.
The idea is that the mats can be folded up and taken out and have a real usage.
We do for, for testing, we, once a year.
Yeah, but generally it's considered the, the elementary... Yeah, but generally it's considered the, the elementary slash junior high school.
Uh, slash elementary.
Whatever level, whatever level wrestling that is.
Yeah.
And they're using.
They're, they are.
Real well, they watch.
I think they like to use it a little bit more too.
So.
I, we'll have to talk about that some more. Um, we're gonna move on to seven oh seven point one, which is facility advertising. Now, this is not a PSBA, um, recommended, um, policy, this is something that we apparently have developed. And, you know, what we're hearing from PSBA is that they really have not done anything with this, they keep processing this policy as is. And they're just recommending that we review it and make sure it's still relevant and still meets the district needs. But this, this pretty much lays out all of the conditions associated with advertising in the school district. Policy seven oh eight has to do with lending of equipment and books. This is an existing policy that was received very minor modifications, primarily just for, for clarity purposes, but there's not much of a difference in this particular policy than the existing policy. Policy seven oh nine, building security, um, you know, again, some minor content. They've added some language in this policy about maintaining a lot of employees who have access cards and access to the, to the schools and, and the, um, after hours entry into the buildings, um, and how that really needs to be managed and controlled. So those are some of the modifications, otherwise pretty much the same policy that we had seen previously. Policy seven, uh, ten, uh, has to do with, uh, use of facility by staff. And some minor updates there, I mean, obviously, uh, facility, the facilities have, uh, are only able to be used by staff if they have explicit approval. And I think one of the things that, um, we have to be careful about is that, you know, staff members are not, uh, engaging in, let's say, enterprise or some kind of business, uh, using the, um, this school or a classroom as their, as their source of employment. I've seen that happen in prior districts. It was being used as a tutorial center, they were charging families to, uh, to receive tutoring in the school.
So what happened to the first feeling?
They were told to cease and desist and that was the end of their, their, their business, but.
That's all?
That's all, there was no, I don't think there were any punitive consequences, it was in violation of our policy. And, but it's a little known aspect of our policy, there's no, uh, there's no inherent right to be able to, by an employee to, to use the a facility outside of what they've been designated for, purposes they've been designated for.
If they don't have to get permission to use it, isn't that, well, they have like identity.
If they're gonna generate funding for it, then they'll be charged for it, they're like anybody else. If they're gonna generate funding, they would be treated like anyone else, they have to pay. I think what Dr. Hamburg is referring to is someone using the facilities without.
So someone.
And thereby generating revenue for themselves.
No, if they, if they.
If you must, according to our policy, you must have the permission to use the policy.
Right, so I guess I was asking, right, if they have to get permission, they'll have to change what it's for, so.
Well, that's all goes back to use of facilities, policy seven oh seven. They refer and be referred back to that, and if they're gonna generate revenue, then there's a cost.
Right. Um, policy seven sixteen has to do with the integrated pest management system. And this is an existing policy, again, this is not a new, uh, policy, it's just been, um, updated to be consistent with school code, they've added some language on, um, of the components of the plan uh, to reference requirements in the Department of Agriculture. And they added some language on record keeping and pesticide application notification, which are, I think, all part of, again, school code. And the last is the deletion, seven fifteen is the elimination of a policy, the use of fax machines. This is a, a recommendation that basically says that the policy's really no longer relevant anymore. Uh, it's not really necessary, it doesn't add value to our policy manual. So those are the, those are the policies up for, um, first reading at our next board meeting. If you have any thoughts about any of those, in the meantime, please forward those to Don and Appley. And, um, you know, we'll be glad to consider any, any possible modifications.
Uh, Dr. Hamburg, I'd like to ask Mr. Brazui a question.
Sure.
We, we now have abandoned Roundup, right?
Hmm?
So what are we using in, in place of that to, uh, pest management under control?
Ortho ground clear, which does not have the glyphosate component to it, which was at the core of the, uh, Roundup competition.
And is that work, is that doing a, a pretty good job of what?
Almost.
Almost, wow, it's better than that Roundup.
Exactly.
All right, all right, well, thank you, I want, I, I appreciate your.
No problem.
Doing, all right.
Yeah, I mean, what, what I like about the new policy language is that it really takes into consideration that, you know, our plan should really combine concerns about the biological impact, you know, the chemical, chemicals that are being used, um, you know, and, uh, and the safety, obviously. But it's a, it's a kind of big organized, uh, and well thought through management plan, which should be in place. I'm, I'm assuming, um, I don't see it here, but, Mr. Brazui, are you, are I, IPM coordinator? Correct. Okay, if there aren't any further questions about policies, we'll move on to business functions, Mr. Gallo.
Thanks, Dr. Hamburg. Next week in business functions, we'll be voting on, um, special education grants agreements. Submission of PlanCon Part K, which involves our, uh, refunding of, of some general application loans this year. Turning, uh, the rest of the delinquent St. Lawrence tax bills over to a private company as opposed to leading it with our tax collector. A donation of lights from Electronic Theater Controls, Inc. And a proposal from Sycamore International involving recycling obsolete technology equipment.
Any questions about those items on the agenda?
Are we going to send a thank you note to this person, Electronic Theater Controls? We got seven thousand eighty dollars?
We always do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. First up committee, Mr. Japena.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburg, we will be addressing, uh, resignations of both certificated and support staff, retirements of support staff, appointments of support staff and extracurricular staff, certificated substitutes and support substitutes, and change of status for certificated staff and support staff. And course requests, as well as conference requests, and the substitute teacher per diem rate, and cafeteria workers' substitute rate, and a recorded secretary stipend.
Any, any comments, any questions about those items on the agenda?
Do I read somewhere where the, um, per diem for, like, a substitute teacher is going, is less than what's last year?
We had that discussion, yeah, there was, we moved it up and we saw no impact whatsoever.
Oh, really? That's unusual.
Goes to the amount of substitutes that are out there, it's.
There's a lot, so.
There's not a lot.
Oh, but not a lot, but you, you think you lowered the cost of substitutes?
We were getting the same amount of substitutes we were getting before we updated, we, it showed no impact.
Our previous work, we're not, so we're still gonna be higher than we were previously, so.
Yes, we did, we just, we just brought it down a little bit, yes, saving some costs and still keeping our numbers where they are.
And Dr. Phillips, wasn't our rate at the raised rate that we had the highest?
Yes, yeah, so we brought it back to a little bit more than the numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Japena. Student functions, Mrs. Strang?
I'm gonna make this short and sweet. Uh, we're gonna be reporting next week on a non-resident student for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, and then we're gonna be approving E through J.
Ooh, look at that. Somebody needs to get out of here.
She's taking pity on me.
I do have a question, though, it's okay, um, so, just time for you, Dr. Miller. So I'm looking at E, can you tell me, um, those for, I believe, psychologists and speech services? Can you explain the need for that above and beyond what we already have, because we already employ speech psychologists? So can you explain how this will be used?
Uh, yes, over the years, we've had a need for a varying amount of psychological services, school psych services, as we have more or less evaluations needed, so instead of employing a full-time employee, we use contractors for that. Um, and so we have two part-time contractors that come in and, and complete evaluations for us. And then for speech therapists, we, but for many years, we weren't able to find speech therapists, from what I was told, before I got here, and we've been slowly rolling that over to district employees, um, as we've been able to find people for it. So we have been very much reducing the amount of speech contractors that we've been using, but we still have a little bit left.
So it's, we did have this contract before.
We've had this contract, yes, for many years, yes.
Any other questions about the student functions items, A through J?
I just wanted to speak on item C for a moment. This was something that I've been working on, that came out of a, a student forum discussion that we had at the high school. It, it raised my interest to hear one of the students saying, in a way that I hadn't heard this before, that we have more fire drills than we have security drills. And the likelihood of a student, um, being exposed and, uh, injuri, injurious, I'm not sure if that's a word. Injurious? Yeah, injurious way or, or a fatal way, uh, to a security situation is far greater than a fire situation.
Obviously.
Um, and the idea behind this is really to urge the legislature to change statute uh, so that school districts have freedom, um, to be flexible in how they schedule drills on a monthly basis. So this would allow, um, if it was passed in exactly the way it's written, in the spirit of it, would allow the district to say, we'll do a number, a combination of weather drills, fire drills, and security drills. And currently, uh, we're permitted to replace just two of our monthly fire drills for security drills on an annual basis. And then anything after that, what we would wanna do, uh, would have to go beyond. And, you know, I think we value classroom time, and this is already time is being used. So I thought that this would be a really deft way to trying to advocate, um, something that would, uh, be in our interest, um, while creating little disruption and hopefully at the state level being something that is, um, doable. So I just wanted to share a little bit about that.
Yeah, I have to say I support the resolution, I think it's a great idea because, you know, our kids are sort of hammered home this whole idea of fire drill year after year, month after month, you know? And, uh, how much drill and training is, is that really requiring? As, as compared to some of the safety issues that I think we're, we're talking about, you know, that the, the drills that might be designed, more customized drills to be designed to kind of, uh, help evacuate or do sheltering in place in cases where, again, there's a true emergency that might not necessarily be related to fire or weather. And I, I would think in this era, this era of heightened concern about school safety, that that's, this would be an argument that should resonate with the legislature.
And I know that, I, I've scheduled a time to sit down with several people so far and in the future, and I'll be bringing this if it's passed, uh, to them to share.
Yeah. Any other, any other comments, A through J? No? Okay, well, that's the conclusion of our meeting, how we're going to adjourn. And I do want to remind the board that we will have an executive session following the, um, the meeting for personnel matters. And we're gonna meet over there. Thanks, everybody, good night, nice evening.